Somebody like to make a motion, go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session.
Yep, pursuant to?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I gotta read, don't I?
Yes, sir.
All right, pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six C to discuss acquisition of real property or economic development.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We are good, Max. Would somebody like to make a motion to go out of executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, now.
Hey, sorry. To discuss personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Not sure.
We're good, all right. Second. All those in favor? Call us, we will set, boss lady. All right. Call us if you want. First on the news of public hearings.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We don't have the presentation, but we get a public hearing. Special town, we need Warren Hart.
So if you will recall during our discussions about how to make EMS more attractive and retain and attract more individuals to fill our shifts, one of those discussions that we came up with aside from a salary increase was allowing our EMS to become part of the pension plan that the police are in, which is the three C special plan. And what that allows for is 25 years of service with two thirds of salary. So we are going to hold a meeting, a special town meeting on December fourteenth here. We'll probably have it in the EMS bay itself and vote on whether or not we should allow this, I'll read the question. Shall the town approve to change?
Should we open it up?
Oh.
Would somebody like to make a motion to open up the public hearing?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you, Adam.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay. Shall the town approve to change its main public employees retirement plan to allow eligible emergency medical service employees and firefighters to participate in main public employee retirement special plan three C effective January first, 2022 for future service only? This change will provide emergency medical service employees and firefighters retirement after 25 of years of service at two thirds of their final, average final compensation, and that is the average of the three highest years of earnings. We added firefighters because, as you know, we're going to undergo a study about whether we should have some type of firefighter medic model. We may or may not, but this would allow for that to happen and we wouldn't have to have another special meeting. There are parameters around this. So we were trying to get away from the per diem model. And that would make, it, per diems are great, and we're always going to need a certain number of per diems. And those are people who come in and say, I want to work, I just need a little extra money, I'm going to come work a couple of shifts in a month. Then we have people who we'd like to attract, who are going to commit, and when I say commit, there is a litmus test for EMS, for the paramedics and for the E M Ts that come in and say, I'm going to take so many shifts each week. And they can't back out. So it's not like they can call and say, we're going to do it, or sign up and then not do it. They actually have to commit and they can't refuse the shift once they commit to it. So these would become part-time people, and that makes them eligible. So they can earn time on that part-time basis towards pension. And what that does is it gives them something a little bit more than most places offer. That 25 years at two third salary is what our police currently have, the town voted in years and years ago. But at the time, I don't believe when the police were done that we had EMS like we do now. I will tell you that the salary increase for our per diems has helped immensely. Our schedule is full for December, which is really nice. There's only a couple small holes that I'm sure will be filled up, but it's something that's good to offer and will hopefully continue to attract people. As I have explained and everybody has heard ad nauseam from me, we're trying to get to a more, it's a profession, it's a job, it's not just the place you're going to come because you need to make some money on the side. We want people who are committed to Waldorough, who want to be in Waldorough, who enjoy working for Waldorough. And like I said, as far as the firefighters go, that would come when we were, if and when we were to move to a paid model of some type, whether it's combined EMS firefighters, whatever the future holds. Even if you went to some type of, and I'm talking years ago, everybody doesn't have to get upset, regionalization, I know that's a difficult word for people at times, but we have that ability then. And if you expect people to answer fire calls at two in the morning, ambulance calls, police calls, this is the model that works. You have to give them that extra benefit. And then there is a cost to that. So it's about 3.4% more than what we're paying. Again, there's no easy number. I'm estimating that that increased cost is between $36,000 and $39,000. That will be the increase when we go to this model. Again, if you look at what the whole budget is going to be in, when we start to get into the budget, you're going to see a big number for EMS, part-time and per diem. Bear in mind, you're going to have to commit to filling those shifts that you sign up for every week. And you, you know, obviously people get sick, they go on vacation, but that's a commitment that you're going to make to Waldorough to get that benefit.
Any select board comments?
I think it's a good idea.
Any, any public comments? Great idea. We need them. Guess that's all there is, so it's?
So December fourteenth at six o'clock P M. I'm hoping we have, we have a date. Do we have a, our, it'll be our town clerk's first open town meeting. Do we have a moderator?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And will it be here?
I will just tell you a very quick story. Unfortunately, at the last election, Darryl went hunting, you know? He misses one election and now he thinks he can miss them all. And our backup moderator was, was a little under the weather. So we had to get a very quick moderator, and Gabe Cooley, God bless his little soul, he was working in EMS and he so graciously agreed to be our moderator. So he opened our election and closed our election on election day. And he did a great job and we thank him for his service. But he had big shoes to fill. He didn't quite fill them the way Mr. Smeltzer does, but he's good.
So will that meeting be in this room? Is that the plan?
I'm going to say probably in the EMS bays, just because we could not get the schools. The schools are set up, their cafeterias and their gyms are set up for students with desks and actually, I think, some lunch periods. So we just, the school couldn't accommodate us, so this is the biggest room we can find.
So people need to dress warmly.
Well, we're not going to have the doors open.
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be cold in there.
And I was out there all day handing out baskets and it was fine.
Couldn't be colder than this room.
It will be.
Okay.
All right, so would somebody like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would somebody like to act on the public hearing? The special town, town meeting.
We've already said it. This was just the hearing.
Okay, all right.
I thought we already did that.
Did we not? Maybe, I don't know that we did approve the actual article.
No, on, on the ninth of November you did. You approved the question, okay. Do it just to be safe. If the town clerk is telling me to do that, then I'm going to shut up.
That's kind of what I was thinking, so.
I'm shutting up. Old habits die hard.
Would somebody like to make a motion to act on the public special town meeting?
I, I move we place the article as read on the warrant for the public town meeting slated for December fourteenth at six P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? We're all set now, Pam, right? Okay.
She's the boss.
Any adjustments to the agenda? Yes, there is none. Select board comments, citizens' comments, sorry. Anybody get anything? Yep. Did you come up to the left turn? Did you get a thing over there?
Yes, there was a mic there.
A thing? So this just picks up?
Make sure you don't have like documents or anything stuck on it.
Wouldn't think it. My name is Bill Moody. I live in town here. And I have, have been obsessed with this COVID thing for 18 months and I've done hundreds of hours of research. And so there's a couple things that really, really concern me that I think the town needs to be aware of. I don't know what your policy is as far as masks or vaccinations or any of that stuff, but I'd like to present a couple things and then you can do what you want with it. But I'm not sure that everybody knows this stuff, so I'd like a couple minutes just to present that to you. And that is, no, it's not. Hello. I don't know what you folks are familiar with, because I don't watch the mainstream media. Most of my information is from alternative websites where doctors who have a lot of skin in the game, who have put their lives on the line, they've lost their reputations, their, their positions in hospitals, they've got a lot to lose and they're all getting together to give out information that costs them a lot. And so I tend to believe the people that are, have a lot of skin in the game and who have credentials like Nobel Prize laureates, published, people who are greatly published in the field, people that invented the technology for the mRNA vaccine and whatnot. So a couple of things I'd like you to know, you may know this, but the news is coming out now and it's worldwide and it's very well documented, and I have tons of documentation I can give you, that the vaccine is causing more deaths than the virus, and that's worldwide. Gibraltar has canceled Christmas because it's 100% vaccinated and they've got huge numbers of cases. Vermont, that was Gibraltar. Vermont is the most vaccinated state, same thing. There's counties in Ireland, same thing. And they're finding that the vaccine is causing the variant that everybody's getting. You've also probably heard that there's two effective, many effective cures, but two of them are ivermectin and hydroxychloroquine. It is used all over the world with amazing results. Sometimes people are cured within 72, 48 to 72 hours. And it's, it's very well documented. India has a state or province, whatever, section that's got over 200 million people in it, and they declared themselves COVID-free. How did they do that? They went door to door and distributed ivermectin. And that's just one example. So it's very, very effective. In the state of Maine, it is not allowed for physicians to prescribe it or pharmacies to sell it. And yet it's universally the cure. Why is that? Draw your own conclusions. I just saw something today that I put on my phone. I wanted to print it and give it to you, but I didn't have time, but it's, go back, go away. Ninety-one scientific studies say natural immunity from previous COVID infection provides superior protection. That's very well documented throughout the world. And that's probably not what you're hearing on the mainstream media, but I can give you hundreds of pages of documentation for that. So my concern is that anyone in the state, the schools, the towns, anybody, I would really, really object to them mandating that people get the vaccine because it is proven to be very harmful, as opposed to what we think it's supposed to do is cure the COVID. So I'm here to ask you to please do not mandate your employees or anybody else get the vaccine. And if the state says you must, I would hope we would stand against it and say, no, we will not, because there's tons of evidence against it. And then there's another one that's really, to me, not quite as important, but it's a hot topic. And sixty-five studies reveal face masks do cause physical harm. There's tons of evidence on that, too. But I'm not so concerned about that because you may be inconvenienced by a mask, but you won't die from it. But the COVID vaccine is seriously a health threat. There are eight hundred and some odd thousand adverse events on the VAERS reporting system, and there's like 18,000 deaths caused by that vaccine. And usually, last time they had a vaccine, they had 25 deaths and they canceled it. We've got, what, 18,000? So this is, there's something going on here that's not healthy. So if anybody wants it, I have documentation. If you really want to get into it, I have a book and it's, imagine that named The Vaccine Death Report, 60 pages of documentation, if you're really interested. But like I said this to the school board last Thursday, do not believe anything I tell you or anybody else. Do your own research, prove me wrong, and then draw your own conclusions, okay? So that's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
This will go to select board comments. So you're up.
Okay. I just wanted to thank Jan Griesenbrock and Kyle Santis for helping out with the Veterans Day ceremony at the Historical Society. They, they rang the bell and it was hard work. You ring that bell for one minute and then ring it for two minutes. It's not easy. But it was a very nice service that Jean Lawrence and the Historical Society put together and I, I was glad I was able to go. And I'd like to ask the board if they're amenable in February, perhaps, to having Tom Schmilk, I think I pronounced his name right, of the Maine Forestry Service to address the board about brown-tailed moth. It's probably a good time to do it. It's before spring sets in, but well, perhaps the nests are more visible in the trees. This guy's an expert on it and my, my feeling is that the folks on the brown-tailed moth committee would endorse having, it was actually one of them that made the suggestion, inviting him to come. They would do the invitation, as, as long as the select board is amenable to that.
Do you think we could just have a special meeting for that because?
We could.
In February's budget?
Yep. No, that would be fine, too.
Pick a night and then?
Okay.
Have a lot of people, you know, put it out on Facebook.
Yep.
Where is he from again?
He's from the Maine Forestry Service. Yes, he is. He's, his expertise is insects, yeah. Okay, so I'll go back and tell them that we're happy to entertain that. Thank you.
Get the word out.
Yep.
I'd say make, make sure the lady that's came in to visit with us before is aware of that.
Yes, she's aware.
Oh, okay, she already is?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It was her suggestion.
Oh, okay. You all set, both?
I'm done, thanks.
Colonel? I don't have anything. Dean?
I don't have anything to add.
Will?
I'd just like to thank the folks who helped together the 96 Thanksgiving baskets that the town should be today, Public Works, EMS, office staff, recreation, and the Ecumenical Food Pantry in Newcastle. It was good to see that and just want to thank those folks.
I got one little thing, which I don't usually have. We took up the floats, the clam floats this last week and the upweller, and we found a pleasant surprise. Muscles had grown on the cages in the last month and a half, two months, but mixed in amongst the mussels was baby clams. They actually attached to the mussels.
Wow.
So we believe we had a second set, but by looking at the cages, they're all white on the outside. We actually wound up moving the float up onto the west side and scraped the cages down. And we put thousands and thousands and thousands of seed in, on the mud from those cages, which we didn't expect, you know, to the adults just to spew out the spawn and it would float around. We didn't expect to catch seed in those cages, so. And we brought that up this week, so.
And I believe you're seeing signs of seed.
Downriver, some places that haven't seen seed way outside, Lake Thomas's Hill, Samson's Cove, there's more seed than in there right now than has been in the last 10 years. Hopefully, we don't know if it's from this, but we're hoping it is. Go ahead, Bob.
Any, any indication yet how green crab is playing a role in this, possibly this winter? Will we have a cold enough winter to?
We haven't seen a whole lot of green crabs.
In our river, right?
In our river.
Yeah.
You get closer to the ocean, there seem to be more, but I think up inside the rivers is, is, the water's a lot colder, so it's a lot less inhabitable for them.
Good.
Take hold, but if we have any warm winters, we could potentially see that come back. And the eegras beds are starting to come back as well, so that's another sign that the green crabs aren't as prevalent as they used to be, because that's where they live.
Yeah.
We handed out 96, so far, nine, well, we had requests for 96 Thanksgiving baskets and a big thank you, as Will said, to Ecumenical Church Food Pantry. And also 25 baskets were also dropped off by one of our local businesses, Highbrow, today for Thanksgiving baskets. So we're working on distributing them. Just so everybody knows, this coming Saturday between three and five is our fill an emergency vehicle event, so please bring a toy between three o'clock and five o'clock and it will help fill a police car, an ambulance, maybe even a fire truck would be great. And those toys are then distributed to those in need in Waldorough. We are also doing a coat and a pair of boots for children in need in Waldorough. So all of these things you can sign up for under the community navigation tab on our website, or you can call the town office. So we just would like to thank you. We've already started getting donations, but this, this Saturday is the big push, go shop Black Friday sales and then drop them off on Saturday between three and five.
And you accept donations, too, right?
We also accept donations. Cash donations are also welcome. We will be doing this year in conjunction with the Lions. We will be doing Christmas baskets. You need to sign up by December ninth. We started getting supplies for those baskets today. So Christmas baskets will also be available. We're planning on roughly the same amount. So we are trying to make them uniform baskets, so we're not asking for donations of food, but if you would like to donate to either the toy program or the holiday basket program, please feel free to drop off a check or mail us a check.
Somebody like to approve the consent calendar?
So will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? New business? Request from the Coast Patrol Officer to finally enforce actions?
I don't know if we wanted to move 11.1 up since Stan is here and so is Mr. Grindel.
Okay.
You're up, Stan.
Yep, we're all set, Stan. So you are handling 11.1 first?
That would be good.
11.1, that's, Mr. Grindel?
Yes.
So he's called me and talked with me. He decided to move some stuff. Today I got a phone call from Mike Parker from D E P, and he is going to be at, Mr. Grindel's on November 30th, which is next Tuesday, at 10 o'clock. He just called us afternoon about 3:30, so. I guess it's up to Aaron to tell you what he wants to tell you. As far as like, that's what I have for him.
Yep.
So.
Handle that first? The board fine with that?
Sure. So I think he, he wants to talk to the board, I believe.
This is Aaron.
First time for this. Well, like he said, I talked to him last week. I received these letters. A week ago, handed to me by my wife. I read them. And here we are. But there was no ever any intention for everything that's listed here, which I don't even know what they're talking about, all these titles and it says crime. I don't know what, what I did for a crime, but it was temporary for a lot of reasons. Lot of things going on time-wise. I didn't have time to do everything I was supposed to, so I'm cleaning it up now. That's about it, so. I would like to.
Do you have a timeframe for when you're going to have it all done here?
Yeah. Like I told him, probably by the end of the month, I should have it pretty much done. It's only about 100 ton there. It looks, looks like more than there is, but there's nothing toxic, which, you know, it says here, it's bill and debris and household items, basically, clean outs, tear downs. But that's about it. So do I need to be there when he?
You don't have to be, no.
Well, it should be.
I'm going to be there with him, he's just going to take a look at it, but it'd be good if he could be there so he could explain it to us.
Yep. Where do I find out what this all is telling me?
What's that?
All these, all that.
Oh, that's just a, those are the headlines that it comes on the, if you look up the nuisance ordinance, which is referenced to see it, M S F thirty, title seventeen, that's all part of that nuisance thing, which includes trash and.
What is it? It's not trash, it's demo, big difference. But what, what part of that is a nuisance?
It's falls under that because it's considered, once you move it from one site to another, it's automatically considered hazardous waste and that's why.
No, it's non-hazardous.
I know, but once you bring it from one side and dump it on another, then that's what the D E P considers hazardous, so.
And they can consider it a transfer station, which I don't think you really want to be a transfer station.
No.
Wasn't your intent?
No.
To become?
No, it's.
A dump.
Sounds like some neighbor complained, but they have, you know, give people free use of my property and it's what I get.
So you're clear, you can't, you can't bring debris from other places?
I know that now.
Okay.
But I don't know, it talks about fines and stuff, too. I mean, I don't even know what to think of it. Has this already been discussed or something?
Yeah, it was the last meeting, I believe.
I wish, I wish I would have.
I think what he said is he never got any response from you or anybody and there's been letters sent previously.
Well, maybe there was, but this is the first letter I've actually read and saw.
But that's not our. But that's not our fault. We sent something to you.
I'm not saying it is, but.
So why don't, do you want to wait, Stan, do you want to wait till the DEP comes down and looks at it? Aaron, you should be there.
Oh, I will be. What day?
Yes, next Tuesday at ten o'clock.
There won't be nothing there left, but.
But that's.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Fantastic.
That's, that's the goal.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
So after that, what do we do? I mean, is this going to continue? I mean.
If it's cleaned up and he gives you a clean bill of health, we can revisit it, the select board can revisit it.
Oh, he wants just to have it cleaned up, that's.
It will be.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Board will, I think with action, that probably the board will.
I'd rather buy toys for kids than have to pay.
Yep, so. Yep, cool.
But I would like to say thank you for actually keeping in touch with us, Stan, and calling me and coming to the.
Stan said that's the right.
Coming to the select board meeting, I think.
Yep.
And letting us know the progress. That was very much appreciated.
No, it was never, like I said to him, never any intent.
Yep.
Or any, anything that that suggests.
Yep.
And Aaron called. As soon as Stan told him to call me, he called me.
Yep.
We had a fifteen-minute conversation, and he was very responsive.
Good, awesome. All right, Stan, would you like to go on to the other ones that you have listed here?
Sure. Let's see. Which one do I have listed?
Forty-four.
Is that my paper I left up there?
Forty-four Philbrook Lane.
That's good, that's mine, right?
Yep. All right, so. I didn't bring that one with me, but, so. I've been, as you know, I've been part-time here for quite a few years. And I really haven't had time to follow through on a lot of things. I've been so busy, I write a letter, and then it just kind of goes away, which is probably what happened with Aaron's. So I sent him a letter in two fifteen, and another one in two eighteen, nineteen. So the last couple of weeks I've been there, now that I'm full-time, catching up on all these things. I have pictures from a few years ago and pictures from today I was there. There's two vehicles, so Philbrook Avenue, Philbrook Lane runs down by the old high school. To the left of Philbrook Lane, the town actually owns thirty-eight feet. There's two vehicles and all the trash is in that thirty-eight-foot section the town owns. So I took some pictures, I came back, I knocked on the door, I don't think anybody's there. I waited quite a few minutes and pounded again. The deck is unsafe. I should have given you the pictures, but there was a small car table had fallen through the deck. I picked it up and put it by the door. The door opens in, so it didn't block the door. But there's a piece of potwop tied to it so that they can tie it shut to the deck. So I put that there, took a picture of the car, come and talk to the police. They ran a plate. The plate actually belongs on a, a white pickup truck, so it's illegal attachment of plates as far as the car's concerned. That's somebody from out of town. They're not even from around here. The Volkswagen's have been sitting there along with the Jeep for over two years, and it's, they're both full of stuff. Actually, the back of the Volkswagen has new kitchen equipment in it, bowls and some other stuff. But the rest of it's all trash. There's tons of trash on the ground. So they have a compliance order to clean it up. But where it's on town property, we'd like permission because of the winter snowstorm and stuff, and they can't plow it off the road. It's going to be in the, right away for the snowbank to have those cars towed. So that's that one. Let's see.
Ben has something to say.
No, I'm sorry, Ben.
Yep.
Absolutely, yep, yep.
Just, I'm the, one of the two closest neighbors to this property. By all, what I, we can tell, it's been abandoned. The Jeep, the Jeep's been there since I moved, since I bought my house in eighteen, Philbrook Jump. Within the last six months, she's parked her Volkswagen inside of Philbrook Jump. At one point, I don't know if you, I sent pictures to Max, she parked a full-size roll-off dumpster. Didn't even fill it, but she, a bunch of contractor bags and an old refrigerator, and then that left. I spoke to her personally because some of the trash was blowing down to me. And since then, she's actively hidden from us. We drove up one day, and she was there and she jumped behind the dumpster until we went by. She was using the portaplane that Marcus put there as a valve, I believe. And I know her husband or ex-husband, I sure don't know, is listed, but I haven't seen him there in three years. I'm now with her, her two now, two much grown kids. I've got nothing against her personally, but it's, I don't, I think it's very unsafe. Unless you, I think someone could get hurt going in there. And unless it was you in the dark, there was someone in there tonight with a flashlight going through the place. I don't, I don't think there's power there either, so, anyway, my concern is of, I'm sure you understand my concern. I don't want it to become somebody's residence with it being unsafe. So anyway, I appreciate the town doing what they're doing, and I'm not here to criticize them right here, but I would like to see it acted on. As far as the plowing, the town plow doesn't come down to her. It plows into the, into the place in front of the back still. So I still like the fact you're going to do something about it. The town plow doesn't go past where the pavement is.
Okay.
Anyway.
Just, do we, I mean, you've mentioned someone who's on the property in some fashion.
I haven't seen her, I haven't seen her there in about two weeks. Last time I saw her, her new vehicle was idling. Her daughter was in it. She ran in, got something, ran out. That's the last time I've seen her. Been a couple of weeks, I'd say.
Okay. I'm just wondering if it behooves us to get Karen Ann somehow in touch with these folks, if possible, as well as.
Are they the owners or renters?
Owner, it's the same last name. I don't know about Karen, but.
Why, this is an unusual one.
She works at two places in town too, so it wouldn't be hard to find her.
I think the vehicles being in the town's right away.
Yeah.
I know they, I think that's a bigger issue.
Yep. Do we need a motion to have those towed, or we just?
Whatever you want to do.
Yes, a motion to have them towed, and I'll refer the, I'll give the referral.
Oh, okay, I'd make the motion to have the two vehicles towed off that Philbrook Lane property and to refer this case to Karen Ann.
Is there a second? I'll second that. Any more discussion?
Have you had any successful contact with this person at all?
Nope, I was going to go to the post office today because I send the mail to Party One in Philbrook, but there's no mailbox here.
It's on the ground.
Is that where it is? Yeah.
So there's one, just not.
Yeah.
She was, I was getting, I sometimes get the mail at my place because they don't have any place to put it. And I'd go and stick it in the car.
So you're down over the hill?
I'm down over the hill.
So I came to your house and knocked on the door today, but nobody was home. But.
He was hiding behind the dumpster. I was hiding behind Aaron's dumpster.
You all set, Will?
Yeah.
So can I? Can I add something to that?
What's that?
Can I add something to that?
Go ahead.
So there's a lot of trash there, trash bags that are broken open, plus other trash. So a few years ago, you hired a Waldaborough trash hauler to clean it up, and then they charged it to the homeowner. I don't know if that's something you may want to do before winter because he can tell you there's a lot of trash, and it's been there since I've been writing letters, and it does not get cleaned up. And if you drive down there, you wouldn't want it on town property. I mean, it's, there's a lot, so.
Do you want to amend your motion, Bob?
Yeah, I'd amend the motion, but I just have a question about whether or not we're trespassing in some way. I.
This is all on town property.
It qualifies as nuisance, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, we're not going to want, well, only cleanup was on town.
Right, right, so I would, I would add that to the motion, the cleanup of the other garbage on the property as well.
Would you like to second that?
Second.
This is Colonel, this is two Colonel that seconded. Second. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor? We'll move on to the next one. Stan?
Is this the Bayonetta?
Yes.
All right, this is a, I thought he was going to call Max, but he didn't. So this is a travel trailer that's been down off of Friendship Road now for over two years. When they first moved in, I told them that they could go in it for the summer. Their intent was to put a foundation in down near the water and build a house. So they, one of them works in Portland. I don't know where the other one works. They were. So I went down there earlier this summer because one of the neighbors had a concern, and they went down and they had moved it from in the field on the hill to down under the hill, about right on the property line. So I told them they had to move it because it was not in a setback and stuff, and they had to be out there in the summer. So I went back this fall. They moved it back up on the hill. I went and knocked on the door, but nobody was there. So I wrote them a letter, a compliance order, and it lists out everything that they had to do and why they had to do it. The ordinance says, which I don't think you have a copy of, but there's a, just tell you how many references there are to it. Real quick, it starts out with a Waldaborough land use ordinance as reference here. So it starts Article ten's specific performance standards. So these are all ten point two four. The first one is the width has to be at least fourteen feet. The second one is a minimum seven hundred and fifty square feet of living space. Next one is roof has to have a three twelve pitch. Next one is the siding has to be residential siding, and number five, travel trailers, a travel trailer show. In no case be used as a manufactured home in any travel trailer in use as a temporary dwelling, i.e. not more than three months. Shall have adequate health and sanitation facilities provided. A travel trailer while not in use may be stored on the premise of the owner. That's right, all the land use ordinance. He got it, and he called up, and I told him they had to be out of the year by, I think it's December fifth. And I also told him that it was being brought up to the selectmen's meeting, and he was more than welcome to come here. And I haven't heard from him since he called back, so.
So they've been living in it all year round?
They have been, yes. But it's been two years now, and he hasn't put a foundation in or done anything else, so, and the neighbors are concerned. So we'll wait till your next meeting to see what happens, if they move out or not.
You don't want us to act on that, or?
No, because that date hasn't come yet.
Okay.
From when they had to, I give them a certain amount of time, you know, they have to look for rent or whatever, so.
Cool.
I think that's it for.
You're just going to keep saying Stan at every meeting, huh?
Sheesh.
Hold on now.
They'll make you pay. So that's all I have.
Okay, cool.
Unless you have some questions.
I think we're all set, Stan.
Oh, the other one, that was at the same meeting as Aaron's. I get a text every day that he's cleaning it up. I guess he's got, he says he's got one more load. I sent him back a note tonight to Mr. Hall. Tell him that everything had to be cleaned up, all metal, any other debris. And I told him I'd be there tomorrow morning and meet him and check with, see what he's, how far he's got.
Good. Cool. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Marcus, you're up. Ice skating rink. What good news do you have for us?
I don't know. So back in twenty nineteen, before COVID, we had a small group in town that really wanted me to get the ice rink back up and going. At the time, I had tried previously to do it up behind eighty gray with not much success. It's a lot of work, more than one person could do, me being a department of one, it just, it didn't work out. I needed a big group to help. COVID happened, it kind of shut down. I've had a few of those people come back, really wanting me to get the ice rink going, but not the whole group. So in talks with John Daigle and myself and Julie, we kind of came up with a different option. So the reason, the reason I didn't get it going back before was I needed, the liner was bad and threw that away. It had holes all through it. To get a new one was about two thousand dollars. And without the support of the public to help me take care of it, it seemed like a waste of money. So we, we kind of, the hard part is every time it snows, every time, you know, even a little bit, whether it's a foot or an inch, you've got to get out there and take care of it every day. And I didn't have the group to do that. And it's, the way the old one worked was that there were plastic boards with a liner that went inside, it fills with water. But those plastic liners, twelve inches tall, foot, foot and a half, so you couldn't, you couldn't get up on it and plow anything. You had to, you had to shovel it or snow blow it. Even getting a snow blower up there was kind of difficult, and it took all day. So I've looked, there's some, I got some quotes. Instead of, had some quotes.
What's your highest price?
Highest price?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
That you were going to quote us.
Quote, so the, we talked, I talked to John about doing, instead of putting the boards back up, maybe we take some gravel and build it up a little bit, and fill it with a tarp, and fill it so that we can drive on it and plow it, instead of having to get out there and shovel it. We looked at, so the, the company that makes the ice rink is called Nice Rink, and they have three different liner options. The ice rink we had before was fifty by a hundred feet. It's big, it's a big rink. They have, they have your basic liner that's just their standard model. That was the cheapest. And then they had a six mil thick one, which is their standard, which is what they recommend for like back, behind the house use. And then they have their ten mil thick one, which is what they recommend for Parks and Rec. And to get their fifty by one hundred, ten mil, it was just over seventeen hundred dollars with shipping and everything. To get their standard six mil was thirteen hundred. I found a fifty by one hundred plastic sheeting on Amazon that's six mil thick as well for right around five hundred and sixty dollars. So it'd be a lot less than the, you know, seventeen hundred to get the big Parks and Rec approved one. Couldn't find a ten mil thick one on Amazon that was that big. So I thought, you know, it's something we're going to try, you know, it's, it's, we're going to be, you know, maybe driving over it. Maybe it would be better to even get the cheaper one now and see how it works. That way we're not investing two grand into it to see if it works, you know, we'll do the five and see. And if it's, honestly, if it works for the year, but you only get a year out of it, it might still be the way to go because you can replace it every year for five hundred bucks as opposed to the two thousand dollar one that might last two. Those liners aren't meant to last, they're plastic. One slip of ice skate will go right through it.
You forgot one thing is where you're putting them.
Oh, yeah, that's the, well, I am here. Why I'm here. So behind eighty gray didn't work. They've cleared, they needed the fill for the land fill. They cleared out behind the town office here a bunch. I think it would be perfect spot for it. It's visible to the town. There's lighting off the back of the fire station that I believe will keep it lit enough for some night skating, especially where it gets dark so early. There's a hydrant right out front. There's water access from the building for me to keep it clean. And I got approval from all three emergency services directors and chiefs that they didn't see it being a problem. The only, the only thing that was mentioned was Chief Lash said maybe designate a couple parking spots just so they know where to park, but other than that, I don't expect to, I don't think there's going to be fifty to a hundred people out there ice skating and causing parking issues here at the town office. If we can keep two or three people skating there at a time, that would be way more than it was when it was behind eighty gray. So that's kind of what I'm here for, is to get your permission to not only spend the money to get the liner, but put it out back.
Yep, you have something?
I was just going to say, I went through the same process that Marcus is going through in trial and error. Once you start to have, once you have that liner deteriorate, keep it, use it underneath your good liner. And you don't get the abrasion because our second time through, where'd all the water go? It was a million little micro holes, and came back two days later, we had no water in it. I went, if you keep the second liner, give it a barrier, we've found that you can carry on for years. on for years.
You've been saying, I mean, with our, we, we put sand in the bottom versus having gravel.
Yep.
Maybe that's something to consider.
Yep.
Is having sand in the bottom versus.
Got a whole pit full of it.
Yep.
Is there a hydrant back there?
There's a hydrant on the, the front right part of the building by the fire station, but they definitely have enough hose to get back there. And there's water access for like just a garden hose back there that I could, you know, I wouldn't have to get the, the fire hydrant hose out every day to skim.
Would you use a fire pipe or not?
Me, no. Him.
This will drain.
It'll drain.
Something that you're gonna be able to maintain by yourself? Do we do it this way?
If it's, I mean, if we, the, the skim coating with the water and the, like, the polishing, I can do that for sure. It was, it was the, the day, the whole days of shoveling that was the problem, but if this plan works where we can literally, you know, either one of the small trucks, or I talked to John about the, the, the small tractor that they use to do the sidewalks, if we could just plow it off, that, that's gonna save me a ton of time.
Is the group, is the town cricket a, a leaf blower?
No, we don't.
Maybe that's something to invest in.
I think we do have a leaf blower.
You could use the quad.
What?
Put a plow on the quad, oh, I think.
Yeah.
Four wheeler.
On the four wheeler, yeah. We do have a four wheeler, but we don't have a plow.
Off an inch of snow, meltout.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that would save you. And if, you know, some.
Yeah. The, the snow, yeah. The plow on the, the four wheeler is a great idea, it's just, I don't know how much one of those is.
They may have one minority. I'll donate it.
Yeah, but, I mean, even, that was the one thing I learned about even having it up at 80 Gray, the wind whipped across that field. And when I was, even when I was snow blowing it off, I had to snow blow it go in the same direction. So even, even though I was on the, on the boards and all I had to do was blow it a foot that way, the wind was just blowing it right back on, so I had to blow it all the way across the rink.
That was a heavy liner.
It, it was. And it took six people, I mean, that was the last time I put out the call for volunteers, you know, I need help lifting this, and nobody showed up. It was, you know, I ended up getting my family to come help me in Abden. But it was, yeah, it's a lot of work, I think, with the, the, being able to drive up on it and plow it off. You know, we don't, you don't need a lot of ice. You know, if we can get just a small bowl of that liner to go down in, it would, it would get us something small in there to plow it off, it's gonna save me a lot of time and make it a lot more doable. If I, if I had to shovel it off with the, me and the, I have, I think I have like one, one or two other volunteers, it is, it just doesn't work. It's, it's a lot of work.
I would approach that, what's left of the group.
Yep.
And say, folks, I'm gonna need some help here.
Yeah. I will.
The ones that were interested in, see if they couldn't come up with a group.
Yep.
That would, you know, and you're gonna need benches, you're gonna need an outhouse.
Yeah.
A bathroom of some kind, you know?
Yeah.
Unless they can come in and use it.
Yeah, I suppose they could, you just have to walk around to the front of the building.
You can buy a Zamboni later.
Yeah, I, I made one, had a tubing last time, but that was the year, 80, the pipes in 80 Gray burst and I couldn't use the water there, so I didn't get to try it out, but I built a little pipe one, it's still up in storage, so. It's definitely, like I said, that, that group before, they, they had 75 people in a Facebook group within like a day, and then we held a meeting, say who would actually come shovel it, and we had six, seven people there. You know, it was, it was not, not a great showing to a, a climate controlled meeting, not a 6:30 in the morning, let's go shovel the ice rink call, it's 10 degrees outside. It was kinda disheartening, but if we can get a group of people, that would make it even, even easier. But I think if it's just gonna be me, the only way I'd try it is to do, so we can plow it instead of have to shovel or snow blow.
Makes sense. Somebody like to make a motion on this? I move that we support this. Is there a second?
Do we have any numbers? Have you decided on, do you want us to, to give you an amount or?
Oh.
I think he has an.
The 560.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I mean, I'm just gonna, I'll probably do the cheapest line, you know, the six mil, the, that was what, the ice, the Nice Rink website says that their six mil liner is thicker than any other six mil liner, or it's not thicker, but it's more durable than any other six mil liner out there. But I could literally buy two of the others for the same amount of money. So I, I think it's worth it to try, you know, for 500 instead of 13 to a fat two, so. But I'm open to suggestions.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
MRC Board of Directors election ballot. I would assume it would be you, Bob?
I guess so. They have an election every year and they're only allowed to vote for one person on the ballot. And I would suggest that we, we vote for Mr. Lewis, Lewis, who's a, who's been in the business for 20 years as a manager of the Booth Bay, of the Booth Bay facility. He understands the issues, he's been paying close attention to the developments that have been ongoing with the MRC and the, the facility that's no longer in operation for the time being at, at Hampton. But Steve Lewis, he's also on the board of selectmen in Booth Bay.
He's Lincoln County, right?
Yep.
So.
It would be nice to have another Lincoln County person on the board.
I'm getting lonely. Make a motion to.
Yeah, I'd, I'd move that we, we cast our vote for Steve Lewis for the MRC board.
Could I just ask a question about?
You have a second, first? Discussion?
Oh, second.
Second, discussion?
What about Karen? Karen plus.
Karen has lots of support up in the Bangor area.
I just think because, reading over all the different people, a lot of the problems within MRC are, are financial related. Are they non, you know?
No, no, I, I agree with what you're saying, but Karen will not have a problem getting the vote she needs to be reappointed to the board.
That's good.
The, the problem is, because there are very few of us down in Lincoln County who are involved in that facility relative to all the towns up north that are involved in it, including Bangor and, and the other towns around where Karen lives. She's very well known up there and will have absolutely no problem being elected. And the same true, same is true for Aaron Huarte, Hutari, who just joined the board. He replaced Kathy Conlow, who was elected as executive director of the MMA, and she's now in that position. But Aaron has been at the meetings ever since Kathy left, he's, he's good. He really knows his stuff. And he's contributed in, in valuable terms to the proceedings that we've.
So you're filling three positions?
You're filling three positions. We can, we can only vote for one.
She was all sat on there, cause I think she's.
I just wanna make sure that Steve gets the support needed.
Top three will get.
Can I just comment? It's very nice to hear that we have two select board members who are very well versed in the MRC. Now, that Will's involved, no, but you know what I'm saying?
No, I do, and it is nice. It's nice to have that.
Not as well as Bob, but I, I, but I'm just saying that it's nice to be able that you had.
Yeah, no, I mean.
The thought process.
It's a, fresh, fresh air.
Yeah.
It really is.
Important.
It is.
It is, very.
Yep. So thank you, Will.
Is there any more discussion? Or not? All those in favor? Okay. Oh, yeah.
Matt, is there no Rubin comments tonight?
No Rubin comments.
Is he okay? Thank you, Paul.
Any other items for the next agenda?
We do need to talk tonight about the thing we discussed in executive session, don't we? Don't we need to act on that?
Yes.
Yes.
So we guess we should have added that to the agenda.
Yep.
I guess that should go back on the new business?
Yeah, and I, I guess I'd move that we put an agenda item on there.
We can, for the, the ARPA or for the engineering?
Uh, this is for the, the stipend that we discussed.
The ARPA funding?
Yeah, ARPA funding, yeah.
We can do that this meeting or we can put it on for the next meeting? It's up to you.
I mean, it's not gonna go to that, so.
That's right, the urgency of.
Right.
You're right.
So we can put that on the next agenda?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
From executive session, is that something?
What's that, Matt?
From the executive session, is that something that had to be put on as well?
The engineering report.
The engineering report.
The project.
For the property up on Route 1?
Yeah. To initiate it. So you want to, we should act on that tonight? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying that I think we should, if we're going to talk about it at the next meeting, that's the last possible date that you could enact, and I think we should just say that we're, we're working on an EDA project.
Yeah.
To run, extend water and sewer to Route 1.
Yeah. Up Route 1. Up Route 1.
Up Route 1. And we'd like to include.
I could make a motion subject to finalization of that, that agreement that's with the attorney right now, as long as it meets your and Max's.
Right, but I think, I think we're fine waiting until.
I, I got the impression from Max that this was really.
I'm talking about the engineering study, not, not anything else.
So the engineering study, but I think you need to.
You go with that.
I, I think it goes hand in hand.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think you can authorize an engineering study on something that.
Okay.
It's.
It's just, are you gonna have enough time if we wait until the first week in December to?
It's the second week.
Sorry, sorry, yeah, the second week in December.
They need to go out and start checking the area before the, the land gets too cold to do the study.
They need to be retained.
The sooner the better. Is that what you're saying?
It, it all depends on your comfort level of.
I mean, as long as it contains a right of first refusal and the other things we discussed, I'm comfortable with the attorney and you taking care of it.
Okay, but I think you, yeah, you need to do, we have to have a formal announcement, so make that in your motion.
Okay. So let me see if I can craft a motion here. So the motion is to authorize the town manager and the town planner to enter into agreement with the owners of the parcel up there on Route 1, Mrs. Braggs.
My first address.
Yep.
Yeah. Map and Lot R614.
Okay. Did you get that, Pam?
I'm, I'm going.
All right. For the referenced lot number that Max has just said.